This meeting of the Select Board on August 29, 2023 at 6 o'clock PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Anyone else recording? Same one. Okay. Just to note for the record, participating this evening are mine itself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united.
Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I believe we have one set of minutes.
Ready?
Ready.
I'd make a motion to approve the minute stated August 15, 2023.
Second.
Can you call the vote? Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is to proclaim Sunday, September 10, 2023, as Suicide Prevention Day and the month of September as Suicide Prevention Month in the Town of Hingham. Turn over to Art.
Sure. Just a little background on this proclamation. It builds on observance on the part of the federal government, and the proclamation also builds on the town's own efforts to promote suicide awareness and prevention. You may recall an event, Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Flag, Remembrance Ceremony conducted on the 6th of August. Earlier this year, the town formed a mental health coalition, including town staff as well as external stakeholders, to coordinate conversations, but more importantly, coordinate efforts to promote awareness and action around intersecting issues of mental health, opioid abuse disorder, abuse disorder, as well as suicide awareness and prevention, and also publishing a monthly Wellness Wednesday flag just to educate folks in the community about mental health resources.
Do you want to read the proclamation? I'll start, and then Joe, if you want to take the next three sections, and Bill, if you want to take the end. Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, Suicide Prevention Month and Suicide Prevention Day. Whereas the Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, is committed to the well-being and mental health of its residents, and whereas suicide is a tragic and preventable public health issue that affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation.
And whereas the month of September has been designated as National Suicide Prevention Month, a time to raise awareness about the importance of mental health, promote resources for those in need, and encourage open conversations about suicide prevention. And whereas September 10, 2023, is recognized as World Suicide Prevention Day, the day dedicated to promoting worldwide action to prevent suicides. And whereas the Town of Hingham acknowledges the significance of uniting as a community to support and uplift one another, fostering an environment where seeking help is encouraged and destigmatized.
And whereas we urge all citizens to come together in solidarity to remember those who've been affected by suicide, provide comfort to those who are struggling, and advocate for the resources and support systems that can save lives. Now therefore, we, Elizabeth F. Klein, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as Suicide Prevention Month, and declare September 10, 2023, as Suicide Prevention Day in the Town of Hingham. Signed this 29th day of August 2023, Elizabeth F. Klein, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey.
So I move to proclaim Sunday, September 10, 2023, as Suicide Prevention Day and the month of September as Suicide Prevention Month in the Town of Hingham.
That's second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Art. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license to Hingham Maritime Center for Harbor Feast 2023, to be held at Hingham Maritime Center on Saturday, September 9, 2023, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. I think we have Amy Conley with us. Welcome, Amy. Hold on one second, we can't hear you.
She can call me if we need to.
Yeah. That looks okay.
Are you able to unmute yourself? No.
Hmm. You have the right one.
Yes, we can't get her. I'm familiar with the event. I'm comfortable forward.
Okay. I am too. I know this is an event they've done in the past, and I see that Chief, Police Chief Jones has signed off on it. He did request a detail, which I'm sure is being arranged.
Amy, can you hear us?
She was responding via text.
Amy, is that you?
Is it now?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Sorry about that. We can hear you. Do you want to just give us a brief overview of the event? We are familiar with it, but anything you want to highlight?
So if we're getting an echo, that means that we're both on.
You gotta mute her window, Art?
I muted her phone.
Oh.
She's okay now.
All right, you're good now.
Go ahead, Amy.
Do you can hear me now?
Yes.
I think you can actually hang up.
Okay. I call the vote. I'm getting a loud feedback.
I think you can hang up. I think you're coming through the Zoom if you want to hang up the phone.
Yes. Okay.
Fingers crossed.
Say something. There we go.
Success, success.
Thank you for your patience. Go ahead.
I'm sorry about that. So yes, we are having our annual Harbor Feast fundraiser down at Hingham Maritime Center on Bar 4, where we're doing a 32-hour spree. And it is a collaboration between the Hingham High School failing team and the Hingham High School growing association with a fundraiser for all three nonprofits. This is many, many years now that we've been doing this to give a brief hiatus around COVID, but this is the second year that we are running it after COVID break.
Excellent. And we are familiar with the event. I know it's been very successful in the past, and I see that Police Chief Jones signed off on it. I know he did request a detail. Have you had a chance to organize that?
Yes. On my list for the speaker, I will reach out to him and make sure that we have an appropriate detail. Last year, he did not come in for us, only because he was worried we were going to pay nine. So I don't foresee any issues.
Okay.
But I'll make sure that's taken into account.
Excellent. Thank you. Do you have any questions, Joe?
I've been to the event. I think it's terrific. I just want to make sure that you've covered parking, which is sometimes a challenge for this event.
So because this is in part a school, do you have any school lessons going to transport people from this high school or another location? Can you either reach out to the high school, make sure that that is okay in this year, before we begin parking lot and let people down to the door?
And I assume people will also be parking, or can park at the Station Street Lot and then walk over.
Yes. I feel like we've made that part of the way.
Thank you.
No question. I've attended the event as well, and it's very successful, and I wish you the best of luck with it.
Thank you. We'll hope for good weather.
Yes. Okay, I'm ready to take a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license to Hingham Maritime Center for Harbor Feast 2023, to be held at Hingham Maritime Center on Saturday, September 9, 2023, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Amy. Good luck.
Yes. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. I hope to see you all there.
Yes, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to the McCourt Foundation for the 14th Annual Tour de South Shore, to be held at Wampe Talk State Park on Saturday, September 23, 2023, from 10:00 AM to 1:30 PM. Can we have Janet Wallsmith with us?
Yes. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well. It's great to see you and great to hear you, and I just want to assure you I'm not driving. I have a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. Yes, it's our 14th year, so this is for the McCourt Foundation Tour de South Shore. It's our big annual fundraiser, and this is very much the same format that you all have approved in the past. It's a 25 or 50 mile length, and also 5K walk and run, and then walk to the state park. So we'll be selling alcohol at registration, we'll ID, last birth ID, and we'll give us a rest risk band for those who are 21 and over as part of the registering package, they are entitled to two free year tickets. So I guess we're not really selling it. We'll also ID again at the year tent, but we're going to have lots of non-alcoholic beverages, including Tabooja, and some fun like sports drinks in that category as well.
Excellent. Excellent. And the, you're estimating about 450 people?
Yes, that's, I mean, well, also, I think Greek Hingham in Boston, I was in an article about all these different Hingham people who were involved in volunteering and sponsoring and depending, so hopefully that's about more registration. Right now, I think we have about 100, maybe 97 people, and this is definitely who's already registered. But if we are, you know, continuing to go on pace, we're hoping for about 400, maybe 450, if things, if it's a beautiful day.
Okay. Excellent. Well, I am familiar with the event, and I know it's been successful in the past, so I don't have any concerns about the format. I did see one note about the application being in review with the DCR. Is that...
Okay. So my colleague, Rosemary, unfortunately, she has a family medical issue right now that she's attending too, so she applied, and I thought that it was approved, but I didn't confirm that.
Okay. That was a while ago. That's from July. That note was, that note was from July, so maybe it's been resolved.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Then I would have approved it also for the light part, but I can confirm that with our public DCR part.
Okay. Excellent. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't know why, but I didn't know about this, and I'm going to sign up for it, so...
You're an avid cyclist over here.
Yes, this will, this will be great.
Oh, I guess, okay. So I'm helping to put flyers around, and if you would be... I'm sorry. What?
Yep. You've got my email address. I'll be happy to participate. So, great. I think this is a wonderful event, and I'm glad you've touched all the bases here. No questions.
It's raising funds to support some of our foundation missions to cure neurologic diseases on a long part, to be able to help the world. It would be a great mission, focusing on research for neurologic diseases, like MS, Alzheimer's, and Alzheimer's patients. So I think it will be a meaningful event.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
You're always welcome to put a sign in my front yard, too, so you can email me. I can give you the address. I've got a pretty good location.
Bill's location is far superior to mine.
Little hindered this year, but you can still put it up. It's a good spot. Good luck. Good luck with your event.
I'm ready to take a motion.
Any comments?
Oh, sorry. Any questions or comments from members of the public?
I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to the McCourt Foundation for the 14th Annual Tour de South Shore, to be held at Wampe Talk State Park on Saturday, September 23, 2023, from 10:00 AM to 1:30 PM.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Janet. Best of luck.
Thanks.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the request of Bertucci's Restaurants LLC, 90 Derby Street, for a change of manager. Can we have Sandro De Cruz with us? Do you mind coming up to the podium, just so people at home can hear you? So can you tell us just a little bit about the application?
About Hingham?
Yes, about the change of manager at Bertucci's.
I was, I was actually a dishwasher when I started in Hingham, and then I became the chief supervisor. Then they gave me the opportunity to become a manager. I left a different location, but then I always loved Hingham, so I came back, and now I'm the general manager.
Wow.
Yeah. When did you start with Bertucci's?
2012.
Excellent. Well, congrats. Excellent. Well, we're happy to have you back in Hingham.
Thank you.
Have you made any changes to the menu?
I wish I had that. But they are working on it.
It's fine, we'll get one lunch right now, Joe.
Oh, okay.
They're happy with their own.
Tom, it looks like the application is complete. Do you have any...
It is.
Concerns?
Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
No, but if you make changes to the menu, do not change the roles.
It's a fan favorite.
Excellent. Well, thank you for being here tonight. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, same one. Ready to take a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the request of Bertucci's Restaurants LLC, 90 Derby Street, for a change of manager from Adam Remeska to Sandro De Cruz, in accordance with the application for a change of manager filed with the Town of Hingham on June 22, 2023, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you for coming in. Nice to meet you. Okay. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Deere &amp; Company for a John Deere 542R compact utility tractor for the South Shore Country Club. Here Kevin Whalen and Kathy Riley. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, this request to purchase the John Deere, it was in my FY '24 budget, in my capital item. So it is essentially what happened was we went a little bit different route. We went through looking at a regular John Deere rough mower, and then also a Toro rough mower, and they were an excess price of $95,000 to $100,000. And the problem also was that we could not actually get the equipment for 12 to 18 months, depending on which vendor we chose. So we started looking at other options, and our golf superintendent Jake Silver decided to go this route, which is purchasing a tractor and then a tow behind. It's a little bit old-fashioned, but he feels that it's a very durable piece of equipment. And I think in the long run, it's $30,000 cheaper than the regular rough mower type. So we think in the end that it provides us best value. It's available right now, and we feel that there'll be long-term durability with this particular product.
What is the life of the product?
What is...
What is the expected life?
Oh, it's probably like 10 years. It's actually probably be longer than if you brought a regular rough mower, because the backing unit is more durable, rather than, you know, you have a lot more moving parts on a rough tractor. So it's, you know, a total separate tractor, which is a very durable piece of equipment. And then the other item is really just a tow behind, the old-school tow behind mowers.
Want to add anything, Kathy?
I just said it was purchased, it's purchased off of a state contract, so...
Do you have any questions?
No, I was actually going to ask if it was off the state contract, and it is. And it's, the contract calls for delivery within a month, September 30th, so that's...
We're hoping as soon as possible, due to the, you know, the grass is growing by the 2nd this year, so, you know, so we're hoping that we can get delivery a little earlier.
And is this replacing an existing piece of equipment?
We will still have, we'll still maintain two Toro mowers that are getting a little bit older at this point there. I believe, like, you know, they're both, like, going to go into their sixth year next season, so they're finishing their full fifth year this year. So they're getting a little older, so this will augment our ability to, you know, mow the grass. And I think, you know, it's interesting, like, this year, and of course with all the amount of weather that we've had, it's, you know, generally speaking, by, you know, July, you only have to mow, like, every other week the rough, and now we really, we're in a situation where we're mowing the rough, like, you know, twice a week. So it's like, you know, we needed, like, another piece of equipment, really, just to keep up, you know, just because of the constant rain.
So nothing's being retired, is it?
Nothing at this point is being retired, no. No other questions.
Bill, any questions?
What other months do you have to mow? April, is it April to November?
Yeah, April, I mean, really, the gra, I mean, April, the rough really starts getting growing, probably really early in May, and then it goes until, I would say, early November. You know, it depends on, you know, season, as far as when it gets colder. Ground temperature really is about, has to be about 55 for grass to grow. So if, you know, generally speaking, if that usually ends probably like early November. But, you know, rough, you can get away with probably, you know, not mow until, until late April, early May.
You're able to have people playing golf year round, if it's a mild winter, right, that we play?
Yeah, we have...
Obviously, no snow on the ground, but, yeah.
Yeah, we have been, you know, we have throughout the years had people playing year round. Really depends, we've gone to a nine-hole course last winter, just to protect some of the greens that we have. You know, there's some greens that might be problematic, and we kind of mix the course up and just have a nine-hole course for people. And generally speaking, when you're golfing in January, being out there for nine is enough, you know, so, and if it does, we do have a nice weekend where we, you know, where we know that it's going to be 65 or 70, then we would open up all 18, but for the most part, we stick to a nine-hole course to kind of protect the course, because that we might have some issues on.
Thank you.
Liz, I did have one other question.
Sure.
Where will this be stored? Is there...
New barn, and we are in the new barn?
So, and so there's room...
That's a great lead-in. Thanks, Joe.
Tell us about the new barn.
We are, we are in the new barn, and it will be protected, you know, fully protected in the new barn. And it's like, great, if the, you know, all our equipment now is under the roof, and we also have, 40 of the golf carts are also in the under roof as well. So we're kind of finally getting to a place where we're kind of, you know, implementing the long-range plan, and it's kind of coming together finally. So it's a great building. It's going to be a great asset for the golf course in the community.
Kevin, for all you do, I hope it's been a good, a good golf season.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Liz, can I just clarify?
Thanks, Kathy.
Did you say I'm going to be mowing my lawn till November?
Possibly. Well, I'm sure...
It's green, though.
Right.
Right.
You can, I can give you some chemicals, Tom, to make sure that... You know, so...
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. Same one. I'm ready to take a motion.
I move to authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement with Deere &amp; Company for a John Deere compact utility tractor and roller mower for the South Shore Country Club in an amount not to exceed $68,891.08.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Kevin, Steve, Kathy?
I'm going to stay here.
Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with ClearGov Incorporated for budgeting software. We have Michelle and Kathy?
Sure. Yes, so I think we've foreshadowed this last week. We've completed our evaluation of different options for the budgeting software that we are able to get thanks to the override and everyone's support this spring. It's really going to help us kind of modernize our budgeting cycle and system, and move a little bit away from some of the manual processes that we now use, including Excel. So we evaluated three different options, two of which we saw at the MMA Conference last January. We spoke to a number of communities who use them. We did some demonstrations and some training with the system that we have, the systems that we want to get, and we're asking for approval to move forward with ClearGov. We're excited about this option. Kathy helped us with the contracting. She can speak to that piece. But they're, they're ready to go. We've already sent them some of the UNIS data that they would need to kind of just get our FY '24 budget in place. And I was going to just share my screen really quickly to show you guys some of the functionality that it comes with. We obviously don't have the tool yet, so I can't walk you exactly through the system. But ClearGov is really focused on local governments. They're based in Materan, Massachusetts right now, and they're, they're working with several Massachusetts municipalities. The communities that I spoke with are very happy with their products. So they offer six or seven main modules. We're going to start with three of them. So we're going to, we're proposing to start with the operational budgeting, the capital budgeting, and the digital budget book pieces here. The operational budgeting and the capital budgeting are kind of our core functions for this budget cycle. I'm just going to zoom in a little bit. So what this really does is it's going to have places where all of our departments can log in and enter their budget information. A lot of these, you can't tell right now, but this is all interactive, so you can start to drill down through different expenses and revenues. You can see from our perspective in our office and the Town Accountant's Office, who's submitted their requests so far, which ones we've approved. You can track all the changes in the system. You'll be able to do different scenarios and projections, and it will look at kind of our historical usage. We'll be uploading 10 years' worth of UNIS data, so that we can look at historical trends and then project forward. It's, it's really just going to kind of move us, sorry, move us more forward into a modern tool and help us build some custom reports. I want to show you the capital budget piece really quickly, too. This is mostly going to be used by our Capital Outlay Committee, but again, departments will be able to log in and submit requests in a more uniform way, and it's going to automatically let us here sort by department, sort by type of requests, like vehicles or projects, sort by funding sources, and just quickly do that analysis with a click of a button, as opposed to kind of downloading data from UNIS, putting it in Excel, and trying to run our own graphs and charts and things like that. And then again, this has a whole workflow system, so we can set up departments to enter their data. We can set up different reviewers, like Sue Nickerson and me and Tom, to go through the requests, and then the different boards, like the Select Board, the Advisory Committee, the Capital Outlay Committee, can be set up as reviewers. So you would do everything in this system. You'd look at all the information in this in real time, and it's all tied to the different parts of it, so it all, when you update it in one piece, it updates in the rest of it. One thing that we've been excited to do, or excited to get here, is a budget book. I know we talk about typically kind of an internal budget book that we put out every[1718.69] I know we talk about typically kind of an internal budget book that we put out every November for the select board and AdCom to go through. Many communities have a budget book that's more public-facing. And they follow this criteria that's set out by the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national association. They have a distinguished budget presentation award that has a whole checklist of things, um, that is really meant to make the budget easy for people to read and understand and interpret. So this software has that checklist embedded. As we input those pieces into it, it's gonna build out our budget book for us, and it's gonna be, you know, meeting that criteria so we can make sure that what we're, the first product that we put out is as user-friendly and digestible as possible. This will all be, you can, of course, have a PDF version of it, but it's also gonna give us kind of an interactive website version of it. So that's something that we would put out after town meeting, when the budget's approved, and then people can kind of click through that, and it will also be interactive. So we're excited about doing that. Tom and I have been talking about that for five years, and.
Came up in Michelle's interview, five years ago. She wanted to be able to do this, so.
I think it'll be a good resource for the community. It's gonna take a lot of the information that you see in the department, power points and presentations. Um, you can tie some performance metrics to it. It's gonna have our, our organization chart, a letter to the community, our financial policies. It'll kind of put it all in one place, and it'll give you more understanding than what we get now, kind of in Article Six. And, you know, it'll be a combination of a bunch of things, but we're really excited to be able to move forward. We have a kickoff meeting scheduled next week, um, and so we're starting with these three pieces to try to bite off a manageable chunk. Um, they do have a personnel budgeting piece that we would like to add, but I don't think, we won't be able to get that ready to kick off the budget in October and stay on track. So we're proposing, let's start with operating and capital. We can tackle the budget book in the spring, and then hopefully for next year or the year after, let's add the personnel budgeting piece, 'cause that's really where a lot of the analytical tools, in terms of different scenarios for collective bargaining or other things, will come into play and help us, um, forecast our personnel and benefits costs.
And I think, Michelle, right, I think you spoke with, um, some other towns for some best practices, and that was in part, what, partly what you heard is do this in, in, in chunks so that you're in phasing almost, so that you're doing it as efficiently and, and as well as you can. You're not rushed and jamming too much in, and things get half-done. What we do, we want to be doing completely and well and right, and this was the best practice, I think Michelle heard, and that's what she's gonna go for.
Great. Um, the other communities that you spoke with, have they done the data integration with Munis?
Yes, most of them, Munis is the big one. Softwrite is kind of the second best, but yes. Um, some of the communities that I spoke with did have Munis, and it's kind of a big upload in the beginning. You can periodically have this system talk to Munis in terms of updating revenues and expenditures. Um, and then at the end, it's sort of a big download back into Munis, but they already told Sue, like, we're looking for these reports from Munis. She sent them right over. They're very used to working with Massachusetts municipalities on that system. Munis will remain our financial system for all the day-to-day transactions, but this is more of like an, an analytical and planning tool, um, that Munis just, the capabilities and the, the staff support, or the customer service just weren't quite there, um, compared to this.
Okay. Um, and I think you've been working with Bill Hardigan?
Yes.
As well, so I'm assuming he's evaluated it from a security perspective?
Yeah, so Bill and Kate are, are part of our process, and they'll be part of the, um, the kickoff meeting next week. All of this is, is cloud-based, so it's not like, it's more like we're buying, um, like, the licensing for it for the next few years. It's not something that we'll be downloading and installing physically on our computers.
Right. Do we have a limited number of licenses?
No, it's unlimited.
Unlimited, okay. Okay, great. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, yes, I just want to follow up on a couple of things you said and some other items. Well, first, as a preliminary matter, is the pricing within what we, what was approved at town meeting?
Yes, it is.
And so I was gonna ask about station cost license, but it sounds like it's unlimited.
That's right.
And getting to security, so we were, I would call old-school at the time, which, one of the benefits is you couldn't really hack us, because there was no really online system to hack. This is now an online system.
True.
Are you satisfied, or is the IT department satisfied that this has adequate protections, uh, from online hacking?
We'll make sure that Bill and Kate and Joe are satisfied with that, but I would say that because this isn't our financial system, we're really uploading information from Munis into it and using it as a planning tool. If something goes wrong in this, um, system, it's not gonna affect payroll. It's not gonna affect us cutting checks or, um, issuing property tax bills. So there's no direct link into, um, into the rest of our financial data or systems.
Um, and are there, is there a backup procedure for what we're doing? So you, you work for a month, and then we don't lose it, so.
Yes, I mean, we can always, I think this year will be a bit of a hybrid, even just the way that we're kind of phasing in this approach. Um, we've typically worked a lot of, we download information from Munis and use a lot of different Excel sheets, so we can still keep some of those as backups. Some of our departments will be doing some of their calculations that way anyways, as people kind of transition into this new system. Um, but I do think people will quickly just see the, how easy it is to use this tool. Yes, I want to transition.
And in terms of, um, pricing, often the pricing, there's licensing fee, and then there's a maintenance fee, and then there's an upgrade fee. So is it all factored in, and you're comfortable with the pricing?
There's a one time, oh, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, it's, it's not licensing, it's a subscription. So it's, um, it, they do have incremental costs, and it's actually in the document attached to the contract. But that's really how it's structured. It's not, um, broken up into many different kinds of fees.
Okay.
You know, it's an annual subscription that we've locked in for, um, a small percentage, three percent, I think, for the first three years, and then going forward.
And in terms of ownership of data, when we put in our data, do we continue to own it? Is it, um, can it be used by other groups? I, I don't know to what extent what we're putting in is proprietary, but, um, I just want to make sure that we continue to own it, and if there comes a time that we wind up changing, that we can actually reclaim the data without having an argument from them saying, oh, Nate, now they own the data, and we can't use it.
We can double-check on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure that the terms are that we keep the data, but we also can't keep the software, you know, in that, in that scenario, that they can't own our data, our data and what we use it for. But we also can't, you know, keep the pages that we did for, you know, three years ago, whatever.
Now, I mean, this is very exciting, and I think it's, it really is, uh, an important move forward for the town, so I applaud you for, for taking these steps. Thank you.
Bill, is there any questions or comments?
Michelle, it's great to see how happy you are. So I know this will be available to all the, um, departments within town hall. Would the school committee, school department be able to use this as well?
We talked about that, and yes, we're thinking that will also be kind of the second phase. They're in the process. Sue and Ayesha have been working together, because they're gonna change their chart of accounts. This is really based on the chart of accounts, so that's gonna be done at the end of this year, so it would make sense for them to start using this system, if they would like to, um, for FY twenty-six's budget, instead of FY twenty-five's, rather than building it out and then changing the whole thing anyways.
I remember we were discussing going with this product, that the user support, um, is excellent. So that's great to have that, you know, if we need it, and particularly the first year, as we kind of navigate through the, um, through the software. So, yeah, this is great that we, we're getting this going, and, um, have fun with it.
Thank you.
The beauty of that kind of software, too, is that, um, they're always improving it, based on the feedback of the users, as well as, you know, it's not, um, like, the old, hard sort of software that you had to wait years for the upgrade. You know, they, they continuously are working on those things to tweak it and improve it, and then have some major rollouts occasionally, so.
And to that point, I wouldn't be surprised if they come out with new modules in the future, 'cause some of the communities I was talking to said, we've been telling them we want to see, like, a debt service, you know, scenario module, and a couple of other things like that. So it's, it's great to work with a, or to hopefully work with an organization that's really focused on municipal government here.
If I can just follow up on Bill's question about the, uh, school committee. If the school department does use this, does that change the costs for us?
No, because it is unlimited users.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
So they would just, you know, they would be entered into the system just like a different department, and then could figure out how they wanted to build their pieces of it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? I'm ready to take a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with ClearGov Inc. for budgeting software in an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, with the authorization to renew for up to two additional terms in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand, twenty-five dollars for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, and in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-five cents for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
We'll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Michelle.
Michelle, before I lose it, so as I'm looking at these numbers, the first year is the highest year, and then that goes down after.
So the first year has an eighty-one hundred dollar setup fee, and then a prorated annual fee that was like twenty-six or so thousand, so that's why it's a little bit higher, but then it's the thirty-two-ish thousand that grows by three percent after that.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. It's exciting. It's nice to move forward.
On time, under budget.
Yeah, on time, under budget, one of our goals. Check. All right, next on the agenda are appointments. I believe we have a couple.
Yeah, I make, the first one, I make a motion to appoint Cheryl Russo to the Beautification Commission for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
We'll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Passes unanimously. Excellent. I will make a motion to appoint Elaine Ward to the Council on Aging for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
We'll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Passes unanimously.
I'd make a motion to appoint Jeff Swett to the Scholarship Fund Committee for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
We'll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Passes unanimously.
And I move to reappoint Scott Sur to the Water Transition and Evaluation Committee for a three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Second.
We'll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Passes unanimously. Excellent. Thank you to everyone who has applied and been appointed and willing to serve the town. Next on the agenda is public comment. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none. Okay, next is town administrator and select board reports. Art, do you want to start?
Sure, I've got one item. I just wanted to share that I've been reading a few recent conversations here at town hall regarding the possibility of gaining access to MWRA water capacity. We've also been talking with several other communities in the region. We have a unique opportunity to, to explore, to access, access capacity that the MWRA has in, in a timeframe that could, amongst other things, allow us to, uh, to get in without paying an entrance fee. And, uh, we're looking at this for the, the purposes of determining how to support development in South Hingham. And, uh, there's a potential to work together with, with multiple communities to, to make, make the connections happen, but also to build a broader base of support for it. It's a long-term project. It's not gonna happen overnight. It will take years, but we certainly have a mortgage share in the future.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for all your efforts on that. Obviously, very important work. Michelle?
Nothing for me tonight, thanks.
Okay, Tom?
Uh, just two one-day licenses were issued, uh, since our last meeting for Untold Brewing, uh, for the Hingham Harbor Fest on September ninth. Um, there is no rain date from noon to five. They had an estimated attendance of a hundred people, and there is a police detail required there. Also, to Widowmaker, Widowmaker Brewing for the Sunset Picnics at Weir River Farms. There are three different events, September, uh, fourteenth, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth. Again, no rain date, five to seven-thirty PM, and they are expecting a hundred people. And there is not a police detail required for that event.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Bill?
Um, the only thing I have is last Friday, uh, Liz, myself, Tom, and, um, Michelle attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the new elementary school, and it was, although it was raining out, it was a wonderful day, and wanted to again express our, uh, thanks to the community for its supporting that important initiative.
Thank you. Joe?
I'm gonna leave it to you to discuss the Habitat for Humanity, um, that we, that both are at. I just had a question. Uh, I notice sometimes we have Harbor Fest, and sometimes we have Harbor Feast, and I'm not sure what the distinction is, but food is served both, um, and members of the public are encouraged.
Yes. So, well, Hingham Harbor Day is all afternoon, right, and free and open to the public at the harbor. Harbor Feast is a ticketed event at the Maritime Center that evening, right? I think that's.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Great.
So yes, it was wonderful to be a part of the Foster groundbreaking. Certainly, history was, was made, um, and I was thrilled to be a part of it. Bill did an amazing job speaking, um, as one of Foster's finest and, uh, a community leader we're so proud of that is a graduate of Foster, as well as, uh, Chief Jones, um, and certainly many others, um, but it was a great day. Um, there were many members of the community, teachers, um, students, that were able to share in, uh, in the celebration. So, um, that was great. Another great thing for Hingham happened, um, Sunday and Monday. Sunday, the, there was a blessing and dedication of two new homes in Hingham built by Habitat for Humanity, and then there was a reception last evening, uh, that Joe and I were able to go to. Um, so we are thrilled that we have two new families, uh, in town. Um, we got to meet them, which was lovely. Um, and also, I know Michelle worked with, um, Carol Felvey on a welcome packet with lots of information about how to get involved, how to register to vote, how to get a, a sticker to the transfer station, and, and all other important information. Um, the Hingham Newcomers Club, as well as the Historical, um, Society, put together a wonderful welcome gift. So, um, that was a pleasure to be able to deliver. Um, but we are certainly grateful for our partnership with Habitat for Humanity and the work of the Affordable Housing Trust. This has been a project in the making for seven-ish years. Um, so we're thrilled to have it come to fruition, um, with two new families, new students registered for school, and, and ready, excited to be here. I will just note, we do not have a meeting next week, uh, so wish everyone, all our students and families a very first happy, uh, day of school on the fifth. Any, anything else? Okay. Take a motion or adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We'll call. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. We are adjourned at six forty-six.